Not coming. Okay. You don't have to leave, you can stick around. Okay. You sit over by John and be fine. All right, good morning, everyone. Hope you all had a very merry Christmas and welcome to this December 29th meeting. We'll start out with a call to order our Planning Commission meeting and unless someone else would like to, Mr. Slade, would you mind doing the invocation?
Father, we pause now. We thank you as we close out 2016. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you blessed us with and how you have taken good care of us throughout this year. Father, we look forward to next year. We look forward to working with these gentlemen and how they have sacrificed themselves, their time, their skills, Lord, to serve their fellow man. I pray, Father, that you will bless them and bless their families for the sacrifices that are made. Father, thank you for our first responders. Thank you for those who protect us, our military, our police force, our firemen. Lord, thank you so much for what they do and give to keep our communities safe. Lord, I pray that you would bless them and their families. I pray that you would give us a good meeting today, that we would seek to do the best interest of the citizens of our county, that we would do it in accordance with your will and Christ's name and amen.
Amen. All right. Senator, approval of December 1st minutes, December 1st? No motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Gaines?
Second.
Second. Mr. Cross, any discussion? All favors say aye? All opposed? Old business.
Okay, under old business is a review of hearings coming up. The first item is a conditional use permit for Danette Hunt Tillman at 1585 Monterey Road. That property is located on the north side of Monterey. Ms. Tillman is seeking the conditional use permit to operate a tax preparation and bookkeeping service in a new home that her mother Patricia Hunt is building. It's a two-acre parcel that's zoned A1. That's an aerial view of the property. Ms. Hunt had an accounting and tax service that was in operation in Vicksburg for 20 years in her home there, and she's wanting to relocate her home and business to Monterey Road to be closer to her family. This is her site plan showing the location of the home. This is her floor plan. The office area is going to be on the front. That's where the business will be operated. And these are, this is a view of the home, and these are surrounding properties. That property was posted and the notice was published, but we've not received any calls.
Three-way you in in case you'll be present during this meeting. I'm curious if you want to be present during this meeting.
He's not going to be here, if you're wondering.
Okay, never mind then. All right.
I thought somebody else had come back.
Nope, guess not. Bob said he's good, y'all. All right, we move on. Bye.
Okay. Now that we've got that covered.
Okay, the next item is a conditional use permit for Ellen Morgan of Morgan Stone at 1837 Highway 471. This property is located on the west side of 471. She owns two parcels. They total 4.7 acres. That property is zoned R1. That's an aerial view. The Morgans are seeking the conditional use permit to expand the existing stone yard. They want to construct an office there, 1,200 square feet, on the existing three-acre lot. She's recently purchased the 1.7-acre parcel to the south, and there are two rental manufactured homes on it at the present. She wants to remove those homes and expand the stone yard into this area. This is her site plan, showing the placement of the new office building. And this is the front elevation. The exterior of the building will be stone with a metal roof. It will have some vinyl siding. This is the side elevation. This is her floor plan. They show a showroom area and three offices. This is a view of that property. And this is the view of those manufactured homes that will be removed. These are surrounding properties. Okay, the next item was originally scheduled for the 17th. That date's going to be changed, but it's just a review of a rezoning for S&amp;S Builders of Mississippi on Highway 468. That property is located on the west side of 468. It's a 44.24-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1A. They're requesting to change that zoning to R1. That's an aerial view. Scott May of S&amp;S Builders plans to construct a residential subdivision. He's proposing 43 lots with an average lot size of 40, I mean, I'm sorry, 26,480 square feet. Sewer will be serviced by the city of Brandon. We've previously had another developer who had planned to develop that property, and at that time, they were proposing 103 lots with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. So this new plan reflects a decrease of 60 lots. This is their preliminary plat showing the 43 lots. This is a view of that property, and these are surrounding properties. That notice was published and the property has been posted, and we've started getting some calls on that.
You have?
We have. No, it's going to be changed to 2617. There was a com- I'm going to call and let the people know that it's been changed, and then-
Yeah, but now you-
And it'll be published in the paper again for the February 6th day.
Aren't they, these are larger lots, though, much larger than when the other gentleman had it.
They're about .61 acres.
I don't think it really matters.
What, about the lot size?
Yeah.
One-
Well, before, they said they were okay with it being, if it stayed with the original zoning.
I did have a visit from-
But now this is going to be better. And it, and it's going to be bigger.
We'll get to fight that battle in a couple months. When are we going to do it?
I was just going to say, I had a visit from one individual who said as long as it was the way it was on the preliminary plat, that he wasn't just, you know, gung ho about it, but he would be okay with it probably, as long as it didn't change.
The one thing trying to bring you to put more houses on it, and the original, originally it was platted for less houses, I think, on the original one back in the day before the last man bought it.
Yeah, way back when, they were proposing a lot more homes with smaller lot sizes. And then that, in 2015, we had somebody propose 103 lots, and now it's down to 43.
So I figured they would be okay with that, but-
Well, that one individual said, you know, that he would be willing to accept that if it didn't change, but I don't know about the other owners out there.
Okay. Well, that's, Bob's already said how he's where that was.
Do we need to do anything? Sorry, make a motion, anything?
No.
Well, do we- Okay, so we don't have to do it here?
Monday's a holiday. Not Monday. Tuesday.
Tuesday, I'm sorry, thank you.
Holiday for who?
Oh, the government works as well.
Okay.
So under new business, the first item is rezoning for Old Gin Estates LLC. That's at Gin Road and Highway 471. That property is located on the west side of Highway 471. They're proposing a 56.17-acre residential development. This is an aerial view. The old cotton gin was on this property. Part of this property is zoned I1 and a portion of it's zoned RE1. This shows you on the zoning map. All the surrounding property is RE1. The RE1 portion covers 26.18 acres, and the I1 covers 29.99. And they're requesting to change that I1 to RE1 to match the surrounding zoning. This is a layout of those lots. They're proposing seven large lots ranging from 3.5 acres to 12 acres, and all of the lots will have frontage on a public road. This is a view of that property from Gin Road, and this is from 471.
So all the lots are going to have their own drive?
They will. And these are surrounding properties.
Get rid of that.
Long ways as it is gin. I remember how I cottoned at that gin.
Yeah, they need to set the hearing for 26.
Motion by Mr. Cross, set this public hearing.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so any site plan, architect's review, anything? Nothing, we have nothing else? Okay. Then, our next meeting, held on, will be set for Thursday, February 2nd, 9:00. Most adjourned.
So move.
Most adjourned, Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second was Cross, any discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, now we'll move on into the Board Supervisors' meeting. First, we have, Mr. Bryan's not here.
Sheriff's not here, so I'll go ahead and do his.
Hang on a second. We said February 2nd. Is this not supposed to be the 6th?
Second will be the work session.
But we're going, we'll just have the hearing on the 6th?
That'll be the Planning Commission.
Okay. All right.
Okay, the first thing that's under Sheriff Bryan Bailey is authority to issue a check in the amount of $890 to Heinz Community College for an established inmate, Monica Barron, to take two online classes, and this will be paid out of the inmate commissary fund. It's a special fund that the sheriff has that he's in charge of, and his attorney has looked, and there is a provision for this to take place.
Second.
All right, most approved. Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
Mike Harrison, Road Manager.
Good morning. Approval utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct fiber optic on the route across Shiloh Road, installed between 2290 Shiloh Road and 2254 Shiloh Road.
Before you guys act on that matter, and I haven't talked to Mike about this, last week, we got a Public Record Act request from an outfit out of Pennsylvania, I think, called JRM Adjusting Company, asking for information about damage to an AT&amp;T line in one of our subdivisions. And my assessment of that request is that this JRM Adjusting Company, on behalf of AT&amp;T, is looking for information about that damage. For what purpose? Probably to send a little collection letter and note to Rankin County for some damage that was done related, apparently related to some work around a driveway. So what I would like to suggest about this particular matter is that you approve it contingent upon my having a conversation with Mr. JRM Adjusting about whether or not we need to talk about damage to the AT&amp;T line from long ago.
How long ago?
Unknown, because they're asking for information to see what sort of claim they might have. Again, this is not AT&amp;T directly doing it, but it's clearly on behalf of AT&amp;T under some agreement that they have to collect their old damage claims.
It's in there on Nolan Lane. Am I right?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like for AT&amp;T to consider whether or not they want to talk to us about this damage claim, or if they want to talk to us about this permit for this. That's, that's kind of where I'm headed with that.
Okay.
I'm with that.
Kill two birds with one stone.
Okay. You were putting in a form of motion, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't know what I'm putting in a form of motion.
It's going to be approving the-
Laura's got it.
Contingent upon receipt from either AT&amp;T or JRM Adjusting Company of a withdrawal of their request for the information under the Public Record Act.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second. Mr. Cross, any more discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Thank y'all.
All right. Next, Mr. Slade.
Gentlemen, the first item under my section is your consideration and potential action to approve the renewal and extension of a, one of our communication tower lease agreements. This is a lease agreement that's been in place for 20 years since 97. Call for $3,000 a year in annual payments. Fellow's name is Jimmy Rhodes, and it's, I believe that's going to be in District 4, maybe 3. At any rate, it's one of our towers that's out there in the county. It provides access for our emergency response communication system. That lease obviously needs to be renewed. We talked to Bob. He does, in fact, need the space on the tower. Mr. Rhodes and family are asking for an increase in the rent, up to $4,500. It's been $3,000 for 20 years. He's asking for $4,500. That's actually less than, than some of our tower lease agreements that we have out there in the county. So that's, that's what's before you.
Why would we increase it? I'm just, I'm curious, why would we increase it? It's just the same tower. It's not affected anything different, has it?
I guess.
On what grounds do you increase?
Mr. Rhodes wants a little more money.
If I had to guess, he found out somebody was getting a little more, so he wants a little more.
Well, the reason I, the reason I say, I heard what you said, is I remember when we, I guess, first elected, the lease on one that was looked at was $3,000, too, and that's been, so about nine years ago.
Yes, sir.
So you said this is, there are some being paid more, but I know this one was $3,000 set way back.
Right.
It's one we had to put in somewhere.
We don't have the $3,000 right now. We have one that's $6,000. We have two that are on 16 sections, so they're only $100 annually. And then here's the next one, so we only have four. So it's a $6,002.
It's $4,500 a year?
Yes, sir.
There's one needed in the north part of the county. I can find some space for our two of them.
For a lot less, too, huh?
No, I'll take the same amount.
I just think it's, I just think it's kind of odd you're going to just go up when it's the same tower, same spot, and it's no, I mean, you're not impeded any more than you have in all these, all this time.
Yes, sir.
But that's what you all want to do.
Well, we're kind of overbear-
Yeah.
What you going to do, take it down?
Yeah.
Huh? Move it, you know?
No, no, seriously, you can't. That's what you're saying. If you don't pay it, you can take it down?
Yes.
Have it removed?
Well, the, the lease itself requires the county to remove any of the equipment, at the termination of lease, remove all the equipment at the expense of the county. I'm not really sure what that costs.
I doubt it had removed each year, enjoying it $3,000.
Well, you know what? It wouldn't hurt for us just to find out if there was any land associated close to him that we may want to move it to.
How much would it cost to move it? I ain't saying do it.
It'd take a lot, but I guess my thing is, we are, we're getting over a barrel here.
Never mind, I went right over-
This could continue on and on, I can see down the, down the line.
At some, at some point-
Where you don't have any-
That's right. At some point, the idea of co-locating and paying a private lease may, we may need to revisit that at some point. Yes, sir.
How long is this lease going to be for?
It's 20 years.
I say we do it for five.
Okay. We can do that.
That's not a bad idea.
And then they're going to want more in five years, I can tell you. They're not going to come in and say, I want less, especially if we're paying $6,000 for others in the county.
Huh?
It would be, we probably would be better off if you, I mean, amortize it out over 20 years.
Just as a reminder, Jay, the lease does not obligate the county to stay there for 20 years. We have a 30-day out, which is what we consistently do.
20 sounds fine.
I just hate to be put over the barrel, and then, you know, like you said, five years and go up and say, well, you know what? Think I want another $1,500.
What was, what, what made it to where we are paying as much as $6,000 in some places? And why isn't it, why isn't it the same?
Bob's in control of all that.
Okay.
Huh? Oh, well, I don't know where that comes up either.
Am I wrong? I mean, Bob, the lease that you guys are talking about that is six went up from three.
Really? It was 20 years. And it went up?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We had an estate matter. Oh, absolutely.
Their escalation clause is all through them, and-
Okay. All right, I just saw that, and I was curious.
I know we were putting one somewhere that had to be moved.
That was when we first, yeah, and it was for $3,000. It was for $3,000.
Oh, yeah. All right, let's move on. Do we need to vote on this?
Please do.
I made motion approved for another 20 years.
All right. Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gaines. All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
We'll, we'll get that, we'll get the lease, the renewal and extension, we'll get that executed and get it recorded and move forward with that. Item B is a, and actually, Items B, C, and D are all the same. They are approvals of commercial leasehold interest 16-section leases from the school district. The only reason these are on here, guys, is because these particular documents are related to real estate transaction closings that need to occur before the end of the year. And so, normally, these kinds of items show up on our consent agenda as just matters of routine approval process. By the way, the 16-section leases, as you know, unless they're agricultural, oil and gas, or hunting and fishing leases, they have to be approved by the board by state law. So they, we run those through the consent agenda, and they just get signed as a matter of course. These are special because they've got to be done today, so we pulled them off. So if I can get in a motion to approve Items B, C, and D, that'll get rid of that.
Motion.
Okay.
And E?
Second.
Most approve these items by Mr. Cross, I mean, Gaines, second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Last item under my section is discussion of and potential action to approve the establishment of appraisal values for our Gunner Road Improvement Project. Gentlemen, this is attached to your agenda package as Item 7E, and it lists out each of the parcels that are affected by the project, along with our appraisal company and acquisition company's assessment of the manner of appraising. So if you have any questions, we have representatives of our acquisition agent here today. Integral Realty Resources is going to be helping us with this project. All of this information, by the way, was provided yesterday. I think Jared and Bob both got a copy of it.
That's all.
Bob? Yes, ma'am. But I was, to make sure they knew that Bob's already seen this. He's looked at it. To my knowledge, he doesn't have any issues with this. So if you've got any questions, we've got representatives here.
Yeah, I don't think Bob hadn't seen this.
Do what?
I don't think he has.
He'll be thinking.
So is there anything in here Bob's going to be upset about?
He got a copy of it.
Not that I know of. It's just our, it's our standard fees related to appraising.
There was one question he had in terms of some of your fees on the brochure, I think.
Right.
How did we resolve that? Where did we leave it?
Well, we did decrease the land appraisal fee by $500 in this, in this new proposal, and that, that he was concerned about the land appraisal cost. We did, have not discussed that with Bob, but we did decrease that fee by $500.
You did decrease it?
Decreased, yes, sir.
Well, one thing I think, Jay, you may be referring to, he said something about using some local people. What, what was that? What did he say? What was it about?
He mentioned that there were local, local appraisers in Rankin County that may be interested in doing, doing some of this work.
Was that being conjunction with you?
No, no, separately.
Oh. Oh, well, that's going to be kind of hard to spit that up. I thought you were talking about something that you would be requesting out.
With them subbing it out.
Yeah.
If I can also, just so we're on the same page about what we're talking about here, this is a project that involves probably 75-
About 90.
In that range, 75 to 80 total parcels. What we're talking about here, land appraisal, is, is only going to be in effect for nine of the parcels. The other 64 parcels are non-complex, 66 parcels are non-complex, if you see that?
Right.
So they don't count as, for the purpose of the discussion about the magnitude of appraisal we're talking about. So you're talking about nine parcels that are going to have to go through a formalized appraisal process. The others will not. Okay?
I'm not suggesting that we don't have the discussion about the cost. I'm just suggesting
to you that there's less involved than we think.
The other 60 some, what is our cost associated with those?
Those will be valued under way of evaluation by that acquisition agent, and those, the cost for those way of evaluations are about $500. And some of the parcels will be combined, if they're, if they're joint owners, the joint property owners that own multiple parcels, will value those, the acquisitions agent will value those in one appraisal. So it's not going to be, it'll probably be 55 or so way of valuations.
John, you got anything to add?
Huh?
Since I know absolutely nothing about it, I guess I might.
No, these, these fees are, are-
I don't either.
Probably, probably lower than the market standard. It's, it's similar, you know, we're charged, we're charging the same fees to our statewide mine.
All right.
Anybody else have a comment?
Just kind of him.
Question?
About Bob.
Yeah.
When is, is Bob?
Will he be here two seconds?
When, is he coming back?
He won't be back till-
I think he comes back on the 13th. Yeah.
Well, he got this, and did he comment on it?
Yes, sir.
And the appraisal fees are, like I said, they're, are industry standard fees, and logistically, using, using multiple different appraisal companies to, to work on this one project, setting up appointments with multiple property owners.
We don't need, we don't need to do that.
I don't think he was as worried about that. It was, it was just one pretty exorbitant fee for the same work being replicated over and over again. Y'all are going to get paid a pretty good penny for that. But you said you reduced it $500.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and there's, there's nine of those.
And there's only nine that we're dealing with, so, yeah, let's move on.
At the time we were talking about that, Jay, we didn't know how many out of the 75 might be impacted. Now we do.
Yeah, I do remember that discussion.
We looked at every parcel. There's some, some significant landscaping on some of the parcels. There's some impacts to parking, access issues, and we're only addressing the ones that we feel like would be complex in nature and may, you know, need some additional analysis, and those are the ones that we're praising. And we're there to aid the acquisition agent if anything complex comes up on any of the way of evaluations we need to step in on. So we're, we're going to be there on all the property inspections, so we'll have an idea of every parcel, just in case.
All right.
I mean, I don't know what else. I do remember the discussion. I do remember the comment, but I, and I do remember talking about, you were going to look at, and you separated them out to what you have here. I don't, I'm kind of in the, I mean, this is not my expertise, so I really can't have a lot to say about it.
What's your area you want to vote on?
Huh? I mean, I don't know.
I make motion to approve.
I mean, I don't know why, I don't know what else we need to look at, really. I mean, John, you, you feel good with it? Okay, all right. Motion made by Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Cross. Any more discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next. Before we jump here, what, weren't we supposed to have a bit-
Hey, Brian, he did a good job, too, by the way.
Let's commission.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Is she going to make it?
Yes.
Supposed to be here today at 9:00. Our election equipment is on site and is being checked in.
They're just asking about time.
Yeah.
I'm texting her when we get close to the end.
Well, we're, it's time.
Okay, so she's, is she coming after they check it? Is that what you're saying?
Sir.
Are they, she coming- Are they, she coming by after they check it or something?
Yes, she was, she was gonna make sure that she was there when they got there, sort of get the process going. And we're gonna let her know when we got to that point in the agenda that it's time for her to come on, and so we're letting her know, uh, we've got an executive session that we can go ahead and move into when y'all are ready.
Y'all want to go over the, uh, you need to go over the, the agenda? Anybody? Lars, anything you need to bring out?
No, any questions?
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the agenda for Monday? I mean, I looked through it, I, I did, I'm good.
I hadn't seen it.
Bob's fine, Bob's fine with it, so, you know.
You sent it to me, I know, I just hadn't looked at it.
No, no, I said, Bob's fine with it. Uh, okay, um...
No, wait.
You want to go?
It's been too hot.
We're going...
We got two, two executive session items, one's location update for you and the other is personnel, so y'all will go ahead and address that, and we can...
Right.
We can come out with the, uh...
Let her come on, and then, yeah. Okay? All right. And Daniel was still in good shape.
What do we got, did we get a clock back there?
That's true.
That's what I just asked her.
What do we got?
Not one of the little bitty ones now, we want a clock.
We can get a Walmart and get one.
I mean, I'm bringing one, I'm bringing one Tuesday.
I will have another one, or I wanted one to, you know, and it matched the decor.
Match the decor. And we can toss up and call it out, like...
Yeah. Every five minutes.
Nine forty-five hundred dollars a year. Twenty years. Nine thirty-five...
Forty years.
I was getting that, we didn't say more than that, because it was too small, so I was getting that.
Hey, we got, uh, just before we go...
Getting us a digital clock.
Before we go into executive session...
Give us clock, our features, oh.
All right, before we go into executive session, uh, one, Mr. Gaines has something he, on additional business he'd like to just bring up right now, and, so, go ahead.
At our last meeting, it was brought up, uh, we were talking about TIFs, and it was, a question was asked, what have we realized, or have we realized any benefit out of the four TIFs at Flowood? And it was, uh, left open, that maybe none or very little, so I looked that up, and the county, this year, under the TIFs for these four, received a benefit. Now, this is after the TIF is taken out, one million eight hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars from those four TIFs. Now, school gets about half of that. So the county, school and government, received nearly million nine hundred thousand. When you take school out, the county was about nine hundred thousand, uh, from those four under the TIFs, and I, I think that's significant enough to not just leave it open as if those TIFs were not working the way they were planned. And I think it's also drawn a nu, uh, just, I don't even know how many other commercial businesses in to that area that are paying full taxes.
It's a great economic development.
I mean, I think that's the way they're supposed to work, when you can, TIF it, and the county realizes nearly two million dollars under the TIF, uh, it helps the schools and us.
I wanted to add one thing also, an additional business. I know we've got the sheriff in here now. Uh, I got that email, it's a few minutes ago, it went out, about the auto burglaries.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm gonna take my hat off to the sheriff's office on that. I know they've been working tirelessly for the last week and a half or so on these auto burglaries, it's hit numerous subdivisions across northern part of the county, uh, and sheriff's guys got them, it, within the last twenty-four hours or so. But sheriff, do you mind standing up and alluding to that just for a second?
Yeah, I will say...
And thank your guys on that?
Well, and I think, you know, it all, probably all worked together, was that I, this would be solved if y'all could give me the hun, the money to hire the quality of people that I have. And what happened with this, alert deputies, saw a suspicious car riding around, stopped these, uh, individuals and identified them, directed very, very suspicious, so we didn't have to take the trouble, so they let them go, passed that information on the investigator, they did some research, got a number for a search warrant yesterday, uh, Grant's Ferry Road, executed search warrant for them, ran, and, because I gave them one, I got some fit deputies, bro, chase them down. And, uh, y'all, right now we have tied, we've had thirty auto burglaries in the last, uh, ten months, and, uh, we, right now, we have these, these guys tied up fifteen of them. I'm sure they get, you know, gone solid.
Do you have inventory?
The only sad thing about this is, uh, all three are young men, but there's, there's three adults, and one's, you know, right now, we've got some mobile property charges, they can get inside, sit, they hit Spears Cross, near Brandon, North Brandon Estates, Castle Woods, uh, several other subdivisions, uh, prison weeks, but the sad thing is the guns, they're taking out these vehicles, they're taking up the jacks, and sold on the streets, so, you know, instead of, well, we're gonna be used for a crime, for a robbery, or, yeah, murder somebody. So we're trying to recover those, uh, but I mean, I just can't tell you, look, I mean, this is, the whole work of deputies up here, and again, because y'all let me pay overtime, we had, like, gang saturated, and I, there wasn't one after the Castle Woods, there wasn't another automobile burglar, we had people at the work.
Right.
And I just appreciate y'all's support and all that.
That's what it's all about. We appreciate you and the job you, and it's like you said, you said, start with is working together.
Yeah, if y'all give me what I need to, to, to keep the damn stuff, we can't keep everything,